Welcome to the Tuesday, December 7th, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. The city council is conducting this meeting from the city council chamber, and staff are complying with the current regulations of the California Department of Public Health and Cal OSHA for safe indoor meetings. As a courtesy and technology permitting, members of the public may continue to provide live or remote oral public comment via the city Zoom video conferencing platform. However, the city cannot guarantee that the public's access to teleconferencing technology will be uninterrupted, and technical difficulties may occur from time to time. Members of the public desiring to provide comments at the meeting are encouraged to attend the meeting in person. We require that all in-person attendees wear masks consistent with Contra Costa County health orders. As some attendees may be participating in their first Walnut Creek City Council meeting, I wanted to welcome everyone and talk briefly about the public comment process. Agenda item number three, Public Communications, is generally reserved for comments on items not included on the agenda. For this ceremonial meeting, public comment on all remaining items on the agenda will occur at that time as well. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be initially allocated for public communications. Additionally, time for public communications will be provided at the end of the open session portion of the meeting if necessary. This process is consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook and will allow for all public comments to be received during the meeting for items not on the agenda. When I open the public comment period, use the raised hand feature or press star nine if you're connected by audio only, which will alert staff that you have a public comment you'd like to provide. We ask that everyone who wishes to speak on an item, please use the raised hand feature to state your intent to speak when the item is called. If you're attending in person, please complete a speaker identification card and line up behind the lectern at the appropriate time. Please wait your turn, and once brought into the meeting, state your name and city of residence for the record. Please keep in mind this is a city business meeting. The city council has adopted rules of decorum to ensure that meetings are conducted efficiently and effectively, and that all members of the public have a full, fair, and equal opportunity to be heard. All remarks should be addressed to the city council. Please do not use profanity during your comments. Given the COVID-19 pandemic and the increased number of speakers that have wanted to make comments on various issues during our meetings, and consistent with city policies related to public comments, each speaker will have two minutes to make your remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. The council will accept oral comments. Written comments submitted and received up to two hours before the meeting have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. To provide a live or remote public comment, join the Zoom video conferencing meeting. The meeting ID is 810-8717-5546, and the passcode is 265536. Should you choose to not provide comments but would like to view the meeting, you may do so in one of the following ways: YouTube Live, you can visit the city of Walnut Creek's YouTube channel; cable broadcast Comcast Channel 28 in the incorporated Walnut Creek area only; Rothmore Channel 26, Wave Channel 29, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99; or you can livestream it online at the city's website. And at this time, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Darling?
Here.
Councilmember Haskew?
Here.
Councilmember Silva?
Here.
Mayor Protem Francois?
Here.
And Mayor Wilk?
Here.
All right, first item on the agenda is Heroes Among Us. Throughout 2021, I've been honored to have an opportunity to recognize some of Walnut Creek's unsung heroes, people who have gone above and beyond to help our community during the challenging time of this pandemic. Over the course of the year, we've honored a wide range of heroes, from a teacher to a high school student, who happens to be here tonight, and a dance school owner to healthcare and to healthcare workers. Each nomination told a story of someone who really wanted to make a difference. Thank you to everyone who shared nominations throughout the year, and congratulations to our many heroes. Tonight, we close out the Heroes Among Us campaign with recognition for two community members and one organization. I recently had the opportunity to see Sonny Singh in action just a couple of months ago, when his organization, Yours Humanly, sponsored a fundraising event at Heather Farm called Break a Sweat for Education. It was a seventh annual 5K event in Walnut Creek with runners in every age group gathering to raise money to support education for children in need. In fact, Sonny's Yours Humanly organization has helped tens of thousands of children, not only locally, but in countries across the globe. And just last month, Yours Humanly honored a young man named Sina Farhadi, a Walnut Creek teenager whose name might seem familiar. He was one of our earlier heroes among us. Just want to give a hand to Sina. So Sonny, for all you do, I want to say thank you. And our next honoree is someone who has devoted her career to making the lives of others in need better. For more than a decade, Caitlin Sly was a mainstay at the food bank of Contra Costa and Solano, working to ensure that families that were experiencing food insecurity had a place to get help. In January of last year, she joined Meals on Wheels as the Executive Director for the Diablo Region. Meals on Wheels delivers nutritious and tasty meals to homebound seniors aged 60 and above. Close to 10,000 people call Meals on Wheels every year in our region looking for help. When they connect with Meals on Wheels, staff members go beyond just connecting them to food, but also to the network of support services available to them. The goal is empower older adults to live independently and with dignity in their homes for as long as possible. Caitlin, I can't thank you enough for your leadership at Meals on Wheels. And I see Caitlin is on Zoom right now, and I don't know if Sonny on Zoom too. So let me first ask Sonny, is there just a couple of words that you'd like to say? And again, congratulations, it's so well deserved. You're on mute, Sonny?
Thank you so much, Mayor Wilk. Thank you so much, Mayor Wilk and City Council. Thank you, Baron Elahhi, for nominating me, and thank you, the selection committee, for finding me worthy of this recognition. I'm so honored to be chosen as one of your heroes among us, and honored to be among the company of other outstanding people who enrich our communities with their work. We founded Yours Humanly in 2013, as Mayor Wilk said, with a mission to provide access to quality education and equitable resources to children in need around the world. That means enrolling children in their local schools and funding their K through 12 education. That means providing computers and technology, funding STEM and arts education, and literacy programs to level the playing field for students and whole classrooms who often go without. At Yours Humanly, we believe every child deserves a quality education. And the achievements we've made through Yours Humanly with the help and support of so many demonstrate what can be done when compassionate people come together on behalf of children in need. I invite all of you to visit yourshumanly.org. Again, that's yourshumanly.org, to learn more about the organization and the lives transformed. On behalf of Yours Humanly and the children we serve, thank you. Thank you for this honor and recognition. I'm deeply grateful.
Thank you, Sonny. Caitlin, I see that you're on, and if you have a few words that you'd like to say as well. Again, congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mayor Wilk and other members of the council. I'm incredibly grateful for this honor. I am very humbled by it, and I know that I don't get this honor on my own. I really owe it to the staff and the volunteers of Meals on Wheels Diablo Region that work tirelessly every day to deliver meals and services to seniors in need. We have obviously seen an unprecedented amount of need over this past year and a half, as seniors have needed to shelter in place and have been especially affected by COVID-19. And we're proud that we've been able to keep up with the demand of people coming to us and delivered over half a million meals last year. So I just want to thank you all for supporting seniors and for this award, and we really appreciate the support of the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Caitlin. And finally, I want to recognize an organization of unsung heroes that I have firsthand witnessed innovation, creativity, and hard work to support Walnut Creek residents throughout the pandemic to continue to receive city services. A thank you from me goes out to the Walnut Creek City workforce. I'll have more to say about our team during my remarks coming up, but to each of our employees, you are truly heroes among us. And that goes to everybody all watching. All right, next on the agenda is the consent calendar. And does any council member wish to pull an item for discussion? All right, does any member of the public wish to comment on an item on the consent calendar? Please use the raised hand feature or press star nine if you're connected by audio only, if you'd like to provide a public comment. For those who desire to provide public comment on a consent calendar item, please raise your hand now. As a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes to make their oral remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. Written comments submitted have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. And at this time, I'll ask the city clerk if there are any members of the public who would like to provide comments.
We do have one hand raised on, a couple of hands raised on Zoom. We'll go ahead and bring in Claire Kelly.
Go ahead if you're on, Claire. Is Claire on? Okay.
She hasn't joined quite yet.
To remind people, this is for public comment on items on the consent calendar only. Do you want to bring in the second person if, there isn't a second person? Okay.
Okay, Claire Kelly is on.
Okay. Claire, if you're on, please speak now. Anything?
No, they denied, she denied the request.
All right, we're going to close the public comment then on the consent calendar. We will still have public communications in a couple of minutes for general public communications. So seeing no speakers then, I'll ask the council if anyone would like to make a motion with regard to the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar items 2A and 2B.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. City clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Francois?
Aye.
And Mayor Wilk?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Next is Public Communications. So this portion of the meeting is generally reserved for comment on items not included on the agenda. For this ceremonial meeting, public comment on all remaining items on the agenda will occur at this time. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, request clarification, or refer the item to staff. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be allocated at this time for public communications for items not on the agenda. Additional time for public communication for items not on the agenda will be provided at the end of the meeting if necessary. Does any member of the public wish to provide public comments at this time? Please use the raised hand feature or press star nine if you're connected by audio only, if you'd like to provide a public comment. For those who, for those who desire to provide public comment, please raise your hand now so that we can identify the total number of speakers that desire to speak at this time. As a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes to make their oral remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. Written comments submitted have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. We also, and if you're here in person who would like to make a comment, just please line up along the side. At this time, we'll note that the time is 6:15. That's close enough. And we will take public comments on items not on the agenda until approximately 6:45. And then the remainder of each, of any such comments at the end of the open session portion of the meeting. So we will start with people that are in person, and we have our first speaker here.
Yes, I'm Bill Hunt, longtime resident of Walnut Creek and currently President of the Walnut Creek Open Space Foundation. And that's the purpose for my being here tonight. Our Walnut Creek Open Space Foundation tries to support the city in its management of our open space and to contribute what we can through our efforts, mostly with restoration and with education. But sometimes we are able to contribute financial support to the city, and this is one of those cases. The city recently had a project to dredge two ponds in the open space, and there may be additional dredging in coming years. So we think that's important, to support wildlife in years of severe drought. So we're providing a check for $5,000 to the city of Walnut Creek to show our support for that effort and for its management of the open space in general. And I just wanted to say, I appreciate the efforts of the outgoing mayor and the rest of the council to get us through another tough year. And I hope that the incoming mayor will not have as challenging a year. So thank you all for your efforts.
Thank you, Bill. And thank you to the Open Space Committee. Next speaker.
My name is Pete Bennett. You know, the first time I spoke here was November 2011. On the speaker card, I put the name of a blog that I'm creating about what I've gone through. I'm going to be easy about it tonight, okay? Things haven't changed too much. So it's called walnutcreekpolice.com. It's going to be something good, the bad, and the ugly. Going to be very nice to the incoming administration. Things are different, at least that. So I get these text messages all the time. And this person's telling me, "We're following you in Walnut Creek, and you're not limping," or "We didn't see you stumble last week when I was here. I could hardly walk." All of that's cumulative of what I've gone through. I spend a lot of time in Kaiser now, unfortunately. So congratulations, all right? But I'm going to share to the whole town in the stands what I've been through. Because in my story, you can't win. And that can date back to 1979, 1989, 1995, year 2000, year 2004. And it's a plethora of agencies and incidents. And I'm just going to leave you with this. I came from a family where they represented very powerful people. One of them was David Rockefeller. I used to have brunch there. The other was President Kennedy. They killed my grandfather in '62. You figure out what I'm in the middle of. Nobody offers me any real protection, zero, absolute zero, nothing.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sina Farhadi. I'm currently the Chair of the Walnut Creek Youth Commission. And I just wanted to take this time to thank Mayor Wilk for the extraordinary past year working with the Walnut Creek Youth Leadership Commission. Seeing constant dialogue on Nextdoor and keeping everyone informed, receiving input from residents, I've seen a lot of it on Nextdoor, as well as the initiatives recognizing local heroes, it is clear that you have brought this community closer than ever. I know we were all wondering at the beginning of this if we got Wilk, but now I can say we're thankful that we've had Wilk. The Walnut Creek Youth Commission thanks you for your work as mayor, and we look forward to collaborating with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Sina.
Hi, my name is Propety Perdant, and I'm the current Vice Chair of the Youth Commission. And I wanted to take this time to congratulate presumed Mayor Francois on behalf of the entire Youth Commission. Knowing that soon-to-be Mayor Francois served on a youth commission when he was younger is very inspiring to us. And knowing that you have a bit of an insider view about what it's like to be a youth commissioner is, I think, going to be very beneficial to all of us. So thank you, and we look forward to a wonderful term with you.
Do we have any other speakers in the House? Any speakers online?
Yes, we'll go ahead and bring in Supervisor Candace Anderson.
And good evening, everybody. And I apologize for the delay in coming in. It is wonderful to be with you. I'm sorry I'm not there in person this first Tuesday of the month. I've got several city councils being reorganized, and this way I can get to all of them. But Kevin, I want to congratulate you on just a spectacular year as mayor. I think we all anticipated when you took your, started your term back last December that surely by now we would be completely done with COVID, that you would be working on lots of other things other than COVID health regulations. And then on top of that, a lot of other civil unrest taking place in many communities. You have done an exceptional job in leading your community, helping your businesses, being an advocate for Walnut Creek at every turn. And that's really what everyone hopes for in their mayor. And then you've done a great job working with your other council members who have made some really important decisions this year with regard to moving forward with projects. I've got to always compliment, in fact, I was complimenting you today at our Board of Supervisors meeting for how you have stepped up as a council for our homeless population and for providing affordable housing in our community. Your council has done a great job, and Kevin, your leadership has been fabulous. And I'm presuming that Matt is going to be the next mayor, but you never take these things for granted, because funnier things have happened at some of our neighboring city's council meetings. But Matt, I've gotten to know you a little bit as we worked together on Recycle Smart. You bring one of those quiet, solid insights. You're one of those people, when you speak, we listen. And so I know that Walnut Creek will serve very well having you at the helm next year. But I did bring a proclamation, hopefully you received it, Kevin. There you go. And I'm out of time, I would read the whole proclamation, so I'm not going to, because I have five seconds left.
Don't cut her off!
And thank you all. Have a wonderful evening, celebrating this evening, the outgoing mayor and your incoming mayor.
Thank you, Supervisor Anderson. Thanks, Candace.
Next, we have Supervisor Karen Mitchoff.
We've all learned how to do Zoom, or hopefully we've all learned how to do Zoom. I still don't know that. Hello, city of Walnut Creek and esteemed mayor, Mayor Protem, council members and staff. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I join with Supervisor Anderson. Unfortunately, I have other Zooms to attend, but yours is the most important, right? We, both Candace and I have served as mayor, and I know three of the five of you have served as mayor, and so this is a special evening. First of all, I want to thank you, Mayor Kevin Wilk, for your leadership this last year through some very trying times. I don't think any of us would have ever predicted this. And as Candace said, we had hoped a year ago that we would sort of be farther along. We are farther along, but there's still a little bit of a hill to climb. So again, thank you for your service, not only to the community and your citizens in Walnut Creek, but to the county as a whole. And to presumed mayor, Matt Francois, I won't be around when you are sworn in, but as I mentioned earlier, it is a special evening. The evening you are sworn in as mayor is one that you never forget. And the joke among those of us who are supervisors is when you mention that you're a supervisor, nobody knows what a supervisor is, but they do know what a mayor is. And that's a testament to all of you who have served as mayor. And I just want to give you my best wishes to let you know, along with Supervisor Anderson and the rest of the county, that we are here to assist you as we move through this next year. Seeing what unfolds, we will all be working together. You are a wonderful and collegial city council, and that is a blessing, not only to all of you who work so hard for the city of Walnut Creek, but to the residents of Walnut Creek. So thank you, much success. My happiness and blessings to all of you and the citizens of Walnut Creek as we enter this holiday season. And I look forward to seeing you in person at the nearest, soonest opportunity. Congratulations, Kevin, for a year well done. Congratulations, Matt, for the year to come. And also to Cindy, Luella, and Cindy. Cindy Silva, Cindy Darling, and Luella. You all are just wonderful, and I want to thank you for your service. Have a lovely evening.
Thank you, Supervisor Mitchoff. And Karen, it's really been a pleasure getting to work with you and Candace closely. And I think that what we're going to be seeing from our county supervisors and the county in general is a large testament to the work that both you and Candace put in daily. And I really appreciate the openness that you have to hearing from all of us on the council, and that really benefits everybody in Walnut Creek and throughout the county. So thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
Bye.
Jim Frey is our next speaker.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Hi. My name is Jim Frey, and I'm a resident of Walnut Creek. I'm speaking this evening for Michelle Shahean, who could not be here this evening. She would like to wish the city council members a happy holiday season and offer thanks to you for listening throughout this very challenging year to the concerns and perspectives of the Save Seven Hills Ranch organization. Our petition now stands at close to 3,000 signatures. We look forward to the new year with new hope and hope that progress will bring, will come forward for all of us. Thank you again, we appreciate all of your time.
Thank you, Jim.
Next speaker is Alexia Lopez.
Did we lose her? Yep, there she is.
All right, are you able to all hear me? I was having some difficulty joining.
Yeah, yes, Alexia.
Okay, perfect. Good evening, council, some of you may recognize me. My name is Alexia Lopez, and I am a district representative for Senator Steve Glazer. Walnut Creek is one of the cities that I work primarily with. And firstly, I just want to congratulate all of the council for getting through another year of your positions. I know this has been a really challenging time, especially for all of those like yourself who are in a position of leadership during a time of crisis. But regardless of all of those challenges, I know many of your constituents are deeply appreciative of all of the hard work and dedication that you have all put in. And Senator Glazer is especially thankful for all of you and your hard work. I would like to give a special shout out and congratulations to Mayor Kevin Wilk for this incredible year that he has had. For those of you who don't know, I am a newer member of Senator Glazer's staff, and Mayor Wilk was actually one of the first elected officials that I had the privilege of meeting when I first started. Throughout my time working at Senator Glazer's office, Mayor Wilk has become a great resource to me and also a close friend and trusted colleague. And I know that Mayor Wilk will continue to be a strong force on the council and continue his dedication to the city of Walnut Creek. And I look forward to working closely with presumed Mayor Francois, and congratulations to yourself as you take on this new role. I'm genuinely very excited to continue a relationship with you and also see what you do for the city. to continue a relationship with you and also see what you do for the city of Walnut Creek as you already have. But with that being said, on the behalf of Senator Glazer, I would like to virtually present this certificate of recognition that hopefully we'll be able to present to you in person soon. So, once again, thank you, Mayor Wilk, for all of your service, and I look forward to keeping in touch. And once again, happy holidays, and thank you to all of you.
Thank you so much, Alexia. And please, please give my best to the team under Senator Glazer and Senator Glazer himself, and it was great to see all of you today.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Catherine Wally.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Hi, good evening, council. This is Catherine Wally, resident of Walnut Creek. Firstly, thank you so much, Mayor Wilk, and outgoing Mayor Wilk and incoming Mayor Francois, as well as the council at large for all of your service. I do not want crime in our community, nor do I want it in any community. I want all communities and all people in them to be safe. I want to work towards building a world where we are not exposed to harm. At the recent organized theft downtown, there was harm, including a physical assault of a Nordstrom employee. I can only begin to imagine how terrifying it might have been, must have been, for many of those who were witness to, as well as those who were responding to the theft. And also, it is telling that we continue to funnel so much of our resources and energy in responding to crime towards the criminal legal system, without also doing the hard work of addressing the underlying conditions of societal structures that lead to crime. During the recent special meeting, comments from this council addressed crime prevention from the framework of utilizing law enforcement and of employing more punitive consequences. I urge you to consider the necessity of addressing crime prevention from the framework of committing to the well-being of all our fellow human beings, and of creating a more healthy, just, and equitable society, as has been outlined in Congresswoman Cori Bush's The People's Response Act. When we attempt to prevent crime by adding more officers, while we may be able to deter crime, it is unclear if it does anything to reduce crime in aggregate. It may, as Captain Andy Brown alluded to, only displace crime. As for me, I really don't think that it's much of a win if we spend large sums of our community money to make our community feel less, be less, become less of a target, only to divert that crime and shift the resulting harms onto other communities. It feels like a very expensive arm race with real opportunity costs. Deterrence, of course, is not a bad thing. But if your resources are disproportionately used in that regard at the expense of the other things needed to create a safer society, it is a problem. I am concerned that this approach will simply contribute to broader societal inequities and foster the conditions for more harm, and yes, more crime. Thank you so much for your consideration. And again, I hope you all have a wonderful holiday season, and for your service, thank you.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Claire Kelly.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. I'm so sorry. Multitasking. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Wilk. I appreciate your tenure. I'm also wondering if the people of Walnut Creek understand why they have no say as to who their next mayor may be. Matt Francois, he of the both sides regarding white supremacy after the George Floyd civil rights movement. I'm pretty sure I'm going to be cut off, and thanks.
Do you have anything more to say?
Well, I have a lot to say.
Well, you have about a minute.
Well, the problem is that you guys tend to weaponize the Brown Act, so. But anyway, Mayor Wilk, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional speakers.
All right. Well, on that note, let's close public comments. All right. So, at this point, let me first ask if any council members have anything that they would like to say in addressing to any of the public comments. Okay. Again, I really appreciate our elected representatives to the county and to the state that came and spoke. And it's one of the privileges of being on city council, and certainly as mayor, to have the relationship that we do with our representatives, because they really do reflect what the residents want and what we're hearing, and what we'd like to be able to have in dialogues with them. So, there is a great relationship there, and it's something that I really appreciate. They're able to make the time to come to this meeting, and of course, all of their different city meetings, too. So, thank you for that. All right. Next is council member and staff announcements, reports on activities, or requests. Do we have any closed session announcements?
Mr. Mayor, there are no closed session announcements.
City manager reports?
I do not have an update this evening.
City council member reports on AB 1234 activities, council member assignments, and various activities and upcoming events. So, why don't we start with Cindy to the right? It's you. Mixing it up tonight. Well, right of me.
And we're not talking about political positions.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And I would just mention that last week was the first meeting of the year of the Cal Cities, or League of California Cities Board of Directors. We took action to adopt our strategic priorities or action agenda for the coming year, in short, which I will elaborate more at our next meeting. It's to improve the supply and affordability of housing, to secure increased funding and resources to prevent homelessness, and also provide the services, the wraparound services, that the homeless need, particularly in collaboration with our counties. The third is to strengthen and sustain our investments in critical infrastructure, streets, bridges, broadband, water infrastructure. And the fourth is to strengthen our disaster preparedness, particularly to manage climate change and the resulting wildfires, drought, earthquakes. No, earthquakes don't come from that. But anyway, and that's where, and I can elaborate more at our next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's go to the Mayor Pro Tem next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I attended as a liaison to Rossmore, the Golden Rain Foundation Board meeting. I provided an update on our special meeting concerning the organized retail theft at Nordstrom. The board and Rossmore residents were very appreciative of the actions the city and the city council has taken in that regard, and the seriousness with which that was treated. They also had some questions about infrastructure funds, both at the federal and state level, and I've relayed those to the city manager, who has assured me that we are on it and monitoring them and looking for opportunities that we might, that Walnut Creek and Rossmore in particular might benefit from some of those government dollars. And that is my report for this evening.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Let's go to Councilmember Haskew.
Surprised me. I can't take off my mask, and I don't apparently speak Robin, so you can hear me. So, keep your fingers crossed this works out. The fun part of what we did, I did in the last weekend, Mayor Wilk and Councilmember Silva were at the Walnut Creek Concert Band concert, and it was just a delight. I am so glad that they are part of our community, and I hope that everybody pays attention to when the next concert will be coming up. For sure, they will be at our Memorial Day and our Veterans Day ceremonies. I had two meetings for Contacosta Transportation Authority, and both of them are pretty routine, so I won't share what they are. And I am going to be mercifully kind with my driver remarks. The first one is drive and walk sober for the rest of the season. Be safe. That's the most important thing. Happy holidays. And let me say it one more time. Please stay safe.
Thanks, Luella. Councilmember Darling.
Thank you. Just a few things to report. MCE Executive Committee met last week, and we had a couple of different things on the agenda. One of the things that we're weighing in on right now is the California Public Utilities Commission is looking at how they're going to change net metering, which is how the solar works on your roof. And MCE, as well as many of the other community choice aggregates, have weighed in that that was an important backbone to developing solar energy in the state. And we want to see that net metering continue, especially in areas of disadvantaged people who haven't had the ability to put solar on their roof yet. The other thing I wanted to report is the Chamber of Commerce, and many of us were there, had an in-person Christmas party, and it was really fun to talk to people in person. And I'm looking forward to an in-person Darling family event this year with over 20 people, and it's just going to be fun. So, but we're going to be safe.
Thanks, Cindy. So, a few things that I had done, along with the Mayor Pro Tem, we had a DEI task force, which he and I are both on, and continue to discuss some of the issues that we can do to ensure that Walnut Creek really is as welcoming an environment for everybody that we possibly can be. There'll be a lot more to talk about this in the months ahead. I had the opportunity to meet with all of our youth leadership commissioners, some of which are here tonight, and that was great. We had a good chance to get to know each other, a little bit about my background, their backgrounds, and some of the questions that came up, including what's my favorite cereal, which was one of my favorite questions, too. So, thanks for that one, Justine. It divulged some of my past from way back. But if these are the future leaders of the city, we are in good hands. And I've said that before for the last several years as well, and it's so true this year, too. So, thank you for this upcoming year. I look forward to seeing everything that's going to be happening. We, oh.
What is your favorite cereal?
Oh, well, so what I, growing up, let me just reference that, it was Count Chocula. See what you've made me do, Justine. As the, I had the opportunity to light on the very first night of Hanukkah, the Broadway Plaza Grand menorah. And as the first Jewish mayor in Walnut Creek's history, it was truly an honor and a privilege to be able to do that. And we just celebrated a Hanukkah, a peaceful Hanukkah, and we look forward to the holidays coming up, of course, for everybody celebrating. We also, during our, I want to talk quickly about the mayor's conference, and include into that the conversation that five mayors, including myself, and those are the mayors of Clayton, Concord, Pleasant Hill, and Martinez, along with our DA and police chiefs, including our own police chief, to talk about the organized retail theft. We had this conversation yesterday. It was a robust conversation. Everybody was really on the same page in ensuring that we're doing all we can to protect all of our communities and ensure that criminals are kept off the street. And so, I really appreciate our own Chief Knox for this, but all of the different mayors and chiefs, and we talked about this at the mayor's conference, and really, this is a united effort among everybody. So, I really appreciate everybody stepping up on that one. And lastly, I, one of my last appearances that I had made while being mayor was the grand opening of the Via Monte Senior Living, which Councilmember Silva was at as well. And this is great to see, this type of senior living. It doesn't add any, pretty much any cars to the street, maybe just a few, but these are active seniors. And it's also, the facility allows them to become assisted living throughout their entire stay there. So, wonderful to see that. I was there witnessing it during the planning. We were there for the groundbreaking, and here it is, grand opening, and people are living there and loving it. So, that was great, and that was just the other day. So, those are my report. And that's our updates. All right. Well, the next item on the agenda is the outgoing mayor comments from myself. So, let me pull this up quickly here. All right. So, it, as we heard from several of the speakers, it's been quite a year as Mayor of Walnut Creek. And I took the oath just about a year ago over Zoom in an empty chamber, and went back to my computer right in the back room there to continue the meeting. And one year later, we've made progress, although perhaps not as much as most of us had thought or that we had expected to see. But it's good to be in person for our city council meetings again. And on that note, while I didn't get to have my family in person last year when I became mayor, it's wonderful to have my wife Jill and my daughter Darielle here tonight. And my parents and son Shane are watching and wish they could be here as well. So, following 2020, we were enthusiastic with the promise that 2021 held, especially as the vaccines were making their way to our community. And alas, it took us until June until we started to see some significant improvement in how we could all gather. The first sign of normalcy was in hosting our Memorial Day ceremony, live and in person again at Civic Park. And it marked a significant moment in so many ways. As life continued on Zoom for so many people everywhere, we were making plans as a city as how to safely reopen our public facilities, City Hall, the library, community centers, classes, and the LeSueur Center. In addition, we were constantly reevaluating our outdoor dining and rebound program to ensure our business community was also supported, and downtown residents and visitors could enjoy a new Walnut Creek downtown experience. The city rolled out a grant program to help our restaurants make it through to the spring and summer, when the indoor, when their indoor dining could then be open once again. This took the effort of everyone in the city, and a huge thank you to the city staff, not just the city management staff, but each and every person who works for the various departments in the city of Walnut Creek. Some unsung heroes, as we talked about a little bit earlier, were front and center on this effort. People in our public works, engineering and planning divisions, who don't often get recognition. Each one of you is important to the everyday work and the success that our city has. And without you, Walnut Creek would be a city name, but not a community. And thank you all. And I'll get to some of the challenges, but I first want to remind everyone, there's been a lot to recognize and celebrate over this past year. We opened the Rodney Plaza, and people were able to come back and experience concerts on a new outdoor stage before we could reopen the LeSueur Center indoors. There was a joint groundbreaking for affordable housing at the City Center Bart Station with Habitat for Humanity that'll help people to have a home in Walnut Creek. Walnut Creek was also excited to see the groundbreaking for the new state-of-the-art cancer center at John Muir Hospital, which will be open in two years. And when it came to outdoor dining, in a survey, Walnut Creek residents responded overwhelmingly with 92% definitely or probably wanting to keep the expanded outdoor dining. And the city listened, and extended outdoor dining through June of 2022 as we envision a new downtown next, and what the downtown may look like into 2023 and beyond. And while the city opened up from the pandemic more and also progressed a bit as infections and hospitalizations again increased, the city never slept. In-person classes resumed, the Bedford Gallery reopened, and a special thanks to Arts and Rec on that front. The downtown library reopened, and Walnut Creek led the way in the county in June, showing how city council meetings could begin safely meeting in person again, this time in a hybrid format. Our parks and open space were never more needed than these past two years, when being outside was the only activity that people could do at times. Major thanks to the Public Works crew for making sure our parks and open space were so well-maintained. Throughout the pandemic, individuals and groups stepped up to help wherever they could. We recognized them by monthly as Walnut Creek heroes, as we heard a little earlier this evening. And whether it was people delivering food, a police officer saving a life, a student tutoring others, or hospital staffs helping save hundreds of lives, we recognize them for their dedication to making lives better and for being our heroes among us. So, safety, both public safety and health safety, took on added significance this past year. In fact, I'd say that safety became an ever-present theme, and we took on these challenges. Walnut Creek became the first city in the county to require our city employees to be vaccinated against COVID, in order to protect the safety of themselves and the public who rely on them for services, and to help put the pandemic behind us. In order to reopen the LeSueur Center and have performing arts, everyone must provide proof of vaccination to attend there as well. We also became one of the first cities in the county to ban the sale of flavored vape products and e-cigarette devices to improve the safety of our youths. The city put out public service announcements on promoting gun storage safety to help prevent tragic accidents from occurring. And the city also started reviewing the safety of patients at reproductive health clinics, and how we can best protect women's safety and their access to healthcare services. This got delayed due to a technology glitch, but will be taken up again early in 2022. One area of safety that didn't make headlines was the potential for major damage from a category five storm in October. And that's because our Public Works Department did such an amazing job in advance of the storm. The early preparation and the on-spot work during the storm kept Walnut Creek from having the problems experienced by so many other cities. the problems experienced by so many other cities during that deluge. Our Public Works team members, I've mentioned them a couple of times, are truly unsung heroes. Public safety has been on everyone's mind for the last year, and no more so than in the past few weeks. When some high-profile crimes occurred downtown this year, the city stepped up the police presence and officers downtown, especially on weekend nights. The city council continued to give our police department our full support and resources needed to do their job well, and that includes arrests and investigations. There have never been orders to stand down to crimes or any actions due to fund the police or to not arrest people who commit crimes. Anyone who says this is misinformed. We were all shocked and outraged by the brazen organized retail robbery that occurred at Nordstrom on November 20th. And it's important to state for the record, regardless of what people may have seen on social media or heard through the grapevine, that neither the Walnut Creek Police Department nor any police department in the Bay Area received any specific information on this potential criminal activity in Walnut Creek until the moment the cars descended on Broadway Plaza and robbers ran into Nordstrom. The thieves were in and out in one minute, and our officers made split decisions to protect bystanders and arrest who they could without conducting a high-speed chase throughout busy city streets. These investigations continue aggressively. And as we've seen, unfortunately, throughout the state since, this is not an isolated problem in Walnut Creek. It's a regional and a multi-state program, problem. We've responded in several ways, including blocking streets, increasing even more police presence, adding surveillance cameras, sharing information across the region with every public safety agency, and supporting that our DA and all DAs charge and prosecute all criminals to the fullest extent of the law. We must show that there is accountability and consequences for these outrageous crimes, and we won't be standing idly by in Walnut Creek. A huge thanks to the police chief and our entire police department for putting yourselves on the line every day to help protect Walnut Creek residents, employees, and visitors. I have a little bit more to say, but I'm going to give an applause on that. Thank you. In addition to public safety, other initiatives that began in 2020 under then-mayor Haskew have roared to action in 2021. These include updating our climate action plan, developing advanced training for staff on diversity, equity, and inclusivity, holding the DEI listening sessions, launching the internal and external DEI task forces, of which Mayor Pro Tem Francois and myself chair, and also addressing our aging infrastructure and other areas of need. None of these important issues suddenly end in 2021, but rather will continue to be addressed in 2022. We're also close to launching a countywide 24/7 mental health crisis response team that first gained traction last year following the tragic death of Miles Hall. This has required collaboration across the county, and thank you to our city manager, Dan Buckshai, who has been part of the steering committee in leading the countywide effort. The new call center will be named the Miles Hall Community Crisis Hub, and we look forward to its full launch in 2022. Walnut Creek stores, let me pause for there. Walnut Creek stores have suffered greatly during 2020 to 2021, but we're seeing more activity than ever in new businesses coming in now. Walnut Creek's been a leading city in the Bay Area for rebounding economically from the pandemic, and a big thanks to the finance and administrative team for your guidance. We've already seen new openings in what were vacancies for dumpling hours, La Fontaine, Cupcake and Third Culture Bakery, Peloton, ESOP, Sultan's Kebab, and many more. And those already announced to open for the coming year include Shake Shack, Table for Five, Famous Hot Boys, Lita Five Tacos, Astro, Lens Crafters, Haagen-Dazs, El Charo, and Pinstripes, just to name a few. Walnut Creek continues to be a premier destination city for business and for visitors. Thank you to the teams under, under and including, city manager Dan Buckshai and city attorney Steve Mattis. Much of the important work of city operations is behind the scenes and less visible. These efforts make it possible for the city to run well today and still work towards our vision of tomorrow. And I also want to thank Betsy, Liz, and Matt for all you do in ensuring the community knows what's happening, and also in helping me getting those messages out. Thank you to my family, Jill, Darielle, Shane, and my parents, Bob and Nessa Wilk, for always being so supportive, but especially over this past year. And lastly, definitely not least, thank you to my city council colleagues, Mayor Pro Tem Francois, Councilmember Cindy Silva, Luella Haskew, and Cindy Darling. We've taken on these roles of city leadership, and I appreciate the dedication, experience, and collaboration that you all bring to the table. It's not easy taking on this responsibility, and I appreciate all that you have done and will continue to do as we work together to make Walnut Creek the best place to live, work, and visit in the Bay Area. All right, next on the agenda.
Before we do that, I'd like to make some remarks, if I could, Mr. Mayor, and I believe some of our colleagues would as well. I'd just like to personally thank you, Kevin, for your dedication, for your advocacy and your zeal as mayor, for not only representing all your council colleagues, but all city residents so extremely well, putting your whole heart and soul into it. I could tell in every event, in everything you did, you gave it your all, and as a result, we're all better for it. I will certainly strive to follow your good lead in living, in leading civil and productive and efficient council meetings. And I was particularly impressed and admired the Heroes Among Us program and the ability you gave us during even a difficult year to recognize the good in the world, to recognize the good in our community, and especially the opportunity we had to honor healthcare workers two months ago. That was very meaningful and poignant to me, and I know to all of us. So thank you, and job well done.
Thank you, Matt.
So I've been on council for a year now, and I just wanted to thank Kevin, Mayor Wilk, because he's the Energizer Bunny of mayors. You can text him any stupid question that you come up with at almost any hour of the day or night, and he'll get right back to you and say, well, you know, here's what you could think about doing, because, you know, this, da-da-da-da. So I appreciate that. It's, the first year on council, you have to learn and grow a lot, because you don't get to make these decisions by yourself. You have to work with your fellow council members. You have to look at all the different perspectives. You have to listen to them. And Kevin has really helped me over the last year kind of grow into this role, and I look forward to continuing to serve with you. I really appreciate all you're, you've done to welcome me to council.
Thank you, Cindy. It's been a pleasure.
Our family used to joke that the only way Kevin could be at all the events was that you had at least six clones, and then we tried to guess which one attended what service. There are so many demands and requests, and bless your heart, you made more of them than anyone. It's like a ruled record. And you met, you met them all, and you represented the community so very well. It was good to see you because it reminded me, no matter how much I'm proud of our community, that you are proud and you represented us proudly. And so thank you for all you did last year. Have a good rest.
Thank you, Luella.
Kevin, congratulations, and thank you. But I'm going to thank Jill and Darielle and Shane and your parents, because it really takes a lot from the family to be able to support someone who is serving in the seat of mayor. You serve for a year, and many people don't understand, two-thirds of the cities in the state of California do not directly elect our mayor. We rotate and share the job. And it's a wonderful opportunity to be able to do that, because you be, be able, you're able to understand the tasks of being mayor and also get to know more about the community at large, which is really wonderful. And welcome to the ranks of former mayor. We are delighted to grow and expand the club.
Thank you. Thank you.
So on, on behalf of your grateful colleagues and staff and the entire community, we have a gift for you. I'll let you do the unveiling.
Oh, all right. Oh, my gosh.
So it's, it's a themed gift, but there, there's a framed photograph with the gavel acknowledging Kevin's leadership and role as mayor this last year. And thanks to our great city clerk, we also have a very meaningful bobblehead of Kevin with, appropriately as a superhero, or his Heroes Among Us program, and because he's our superhero in reopening the city to City Hall for meetings and business.
And a water bottle, because I need my water. You know, I'm not sure I ever used this this year, so I'm going to make sure I'm using this. At least, there's a gold gavel in there, so I need to. Thank you all so much.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you all. Wow. Well, I suppose my next and last order as mayor is the city council reorganization, and this is the selection of the mayor for the next year. And so I would like to start the nomination on this one. I've worked with Mayor Pro Tem Matt Francois specifically on the city council now for three years, but we got to know each other prior to that when Matt was on the planning commission. In terms of somebody being prepared for the job, I'm not sure that's ever been equaled. When Matt, you were on for 10 years, I think, on planning commission prior to being on city council. Considering the term limits are eight years, that's pretty impressive.
Snuck in.
And it is my pleasure. Matt brings a thoughtfulness, experience, a land use attorney eye to it as well, but most importantly of all, he's been a great collaborator and somebody that I've been able to bounce ideas off of throughout my entire year as mayor. And I look forward to seeing Matt and his mayor pro tem be, have that kind of same collaboration and collegiality. And it is my profound honor to nominate Mayor Pro Tem Matt Francois to become the next mayor of Walnut Creek.
And I have the great honor of being able to nominate Matt Francois, second that motion, and to look forward to working with you in this role, since we've worked together for over 15, 16 years. So I second the motion.
Cindy Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Wilk?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Hardy, aye.
And Mayor Pro Tem Francois?
Aye, thank you.
Motion carries.
The motion passes.
Our next order of business is the selection of the mayor pro tem. Call this item and would entertain a motion. Councilmember Haskew.
May I please have that honor? As the saying goes, if you want something done, you give it to the busiest person you know. We should be in great shape, because I am nominating the Chair of the Community Service Day, a member of the state level of Seismic Safety Commission, and now the Chair of the Board of Cal Cities, and oh, so much more. It is my distinct honor to nominate Cindy Silva to serve as the mayor pro tem for the coming year, and we'll be in good hands.
And I would be happy to second that, because she can, she can wrangle toddlers, so she could.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
And Mayor Francois?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So our next and final item of business is for myself to provide some comments. I will try to keep this brief, but I just want to start by thanking the residents of Walnut Creek for entrusting me to represent them three years ago. I have never taken that obligation for granted, and I've never taken it lightly. I understand how sacred that responsibility is in a democracy. And as I promised to do three years ago, I've tried to work hard for you to listen to your concerns and to respond to them in a thoughtful and inclusive manner. I also want to deeply thank my colleagues for the trust they have placed in me to lead them over the next year. I am truly honored and humbled to serve in this role. To outgoing Mayor Wilk, I personally appreciated the partnership we had as mayor and mayor pro tem in advocating for and representing the city, and I look forward to continuing that good working relationship with Mayor Pro Tem Silva. Looking ahead to the next year, my priorities will be the city's priorities, the priorities we as a council voted on earlier this year. These include diversity, equity, and inclusion, economic development and COVID recovery, environmental sustainability and climate action, infrastructure and facilities, and social wellness and public safety. As former Mayor Wilk noted, he and I have the pleasure of serving on the city's DEI task force. We're making progress on identifying issues of community concern and moving forward with recommendations for council consideration. And as we do so, I want to make sure that we prioritize training for both staff and my council colleagues on implicit bias and diversity and inclusion, so that we can truly start building a culture and environment where diversity and inclusion is embraced. In terms of economic development, we need to ensure that we continue to be flexible in meeting the needs of our business community. The pandemic has taught us that we don't have to do things exactly the way we did in the past. The success of the rebound program allowing outdoor dining and public art are clear examples of that. Working with the Chamber and WCD, I want to see us include that same level of creativity and out-of-the-box thinking with our Downtown Next program. I also want to ensure that our residents and business owners interacting with city, with our city staff are able to receive a quick and efficient and productive response, and they experience good customer service. I'm proud that we, as a city, are taking a leadership role in responding to the risk of climate change. When completed, the plan that we are developing will put the city on track to see, to achieve the state's goals for greenhouse gas reductions in 2030 and beyond. As to infrastructure, I'm particularly excited that we are finally moving forward with plans to rebuild the Clark Swim Center and Heather Farm Community Center. These treasured community assets have served us well over the past 50 years. Now is the time to ensure that these critically needed facilities are replaced, so that the I also want us to look for ways to help plan for the future field needs of our recreational leagues, soccer, baseball, and lacrosse. In terms of public safety, we do not and will not tolerate crime of any sort in this community, especially the organized retail theft that occurred at Nordstrom a few weeks ago. The council has already taken concrete steps to ensure that Walnut Creek remains a safe place to work, play, and visit. We will not be complacent in this regard, and we will be vigilant in pursuit of protecting public safety. In regard to social wellness, I want to thank both supervisors, Anderson and Mitchoff, who were on earlier, as well as their county colleagues, for establishing and funding the A3 program to ensure that anyone in Contra Costa County can access timely and appropriate behavioral health crisis services anywhere, anytime. This city, including our city manager, was instrumental in spearheading that regional effort. And I also want to thank and acknowledge the Hall family for using their family pain to create this positive community change. Finally, to my colleagues, I want to offer two pieces of leadership advice I learned over this past year. And the first is a quote from the late Colin Powell, who said, "Avoid having your ego so close to your position that when your position falls..." "Avoid having your ego so close to your position that when your position falls, your ego goes with it." And the other was a remark by Congresswoman Barbara Lee, who noted that 95% of the time, elected officials represent the views of their constituents, but there's 5% of the time that requires leadership, moments when you're willing to risk everything because it's the right thing to do. So the challenge I have for myself and for my council colleagues is for us all to be open to changing our positions if needed and warranted and to be willing to take action because it's the right thing to do. Actually, that wasn't finally. Now we're at finally. And last but not least, I want to thank and acknowledge my family for their ongoing love and support. My wife Samantha, who's here tonight, my son Andrew, who's at crew practice, and our daughter Caroline, who's in London, but she says she's tuning in. I'm not sure I believe that. It hasn't always been easy. When I was running for, for city council, former Mayor Skrell told me, "Find a good friend you can go and have a drink with." And I have some good friends here tonight, Jason and Kim Cook, who I have drank with, but they also always help me see the levity of situations. And whether it's through a text or just a, a phone call or an exchange, and so I thank you for that. My dad, Tom, who's 80 years young, he, he says he's my younger brother. He's here as well, and he's been a role model to me, not only as a husband and a father, but as an example of how to live a faith-filled and purpose-driven life. Now, I truly believe Walnut Creek's best days are ahead of it. I look forward to meeting with as many residents and business owners as I can over this next year. I also look forward to working with my council colleagues and our great city staff in building a better and brighter future for all who call or would like to call Walnut Creek home. Thank you again to my council colleagues for the opportunity to serve you and the residents of this great community. And there being no further business tonight, we are adjourned.